It was a presentation, and then I didn't realize later that I was on the agenda to do a presentation.
Oh, I don't think you're on the agenda to do a presentation.
Perfect, okay, I just didn't know, I brought one just in case.
I don't think so today.
And so I didn't want to do that again this year where if they were expecting me to come up and make report marks after the proclamation.
Oh, yeah, no, after proclamation, no, we don't have you on the agenda today.
Okay.
We just have bedboard.
Okay, good, so, um, in the, um...
And so you fall, um, after minutes.
Okay, come up, get the proclamation, I'll take the picture, and I'm done, and I'm not coming back up?
No, correct.
Perfect, all right, I just want to make absolute sure.
Yes, I understand.
Excellent.
Now, did you have a presentation that you wanted?
I did, but I, I...
All right, manager, mic check one, two, three, manager, uh, mic check one, two, three.
You want to do your mic check real quick since you're...
Go ahead. It's all you.
All right.
County clerk, mic check one, two, three, county clerk, mic test one, two, three.
All yours.
Attorney Mike, testing one, two, three, attorney, mic check one, two, three. Howell, mic check one, two, three, Howell, mic testing one, two, three.
Thank you, happy Valentine's Day.
Lopez, mic check one, two, three, Lopez, mic, testing one, two, three. Beatty, mic, testing one, two, three, Beatty, mic, check one, two, three. Dennis, mic check one, two, three, Dennis, mic, testing one, two, three. Meister, mic, testing one, two, three, Meister, mic, check one, two, three.
I'll just clarify.
Yeah, clarify.
Tell me more.
I can't stomach that stuff.
Please, please.
Does not agree with me.
Milk your shirt. Thank you.
How about some tea?
Can you reach out and give apologies?
All right, hopefully everyone can hear me, we'll be starting shortly, so stand by. All right, 45 seconds, stand by. 30 seconds. Okay, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.
Well, good morning, uh, welcome to Cedric County Board of County Commission Meeting. Happy Valentine's Day for those that are here, uh, if you're joining us on KPTS or joining us here in person, we're glad that you're here today, when you walked in, uh, you could have picked up an agenda packet at the door, you can find that online at cedriccounty.org, and all the backup material is also in there as well, the things that we have in our possession to review, all of that you can review as well, so, uh, it's gonna be a good day, uh, we got, uh, a lot of things on the agenda today, so why don't we get to work, I want to call the meeting to order for February 14th, 2024, Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation to be led by Pastor Thomas Johnson with faith lute and church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen, the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, all who follow his precepts have good understanding, let us pray, Lord God Almighty, who gives power to the faint, increases strength to the weak, without you we can do no good thing, but by your gracious assistance we are enabled for the performance of every duty laid upon us, in this supplication, Lord of power and of love, we come to you today trusting in your strength and infinite goodness, let your grace be with these, your servants here today, gathered at this Cedric County Commissioners' meeting, Lord, they are your stewards on behalf of the city of Wichita and beyond, be their helper to carry them beyond their own strength, and to make all that they think and speak and do acceptable in your sight, through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Johnson, thank you for being here this morning, we appreciate, appreciate your words and encouragement, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present, next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications, just a quick happy Valentine's Day, and also happy Chief Super Bowl Parade Day in Kansas City. Just had to put that out there, all right, we're gonna start the, today with more county good news, I'd like to invite Joan Tammany, Executive Director of Comcare, to talk about the recent certification they earned.
Good morning Joan, thanks for being here.
Good morning Chairman Beatty, Commissioners, um, Joan Tammany, Executive Director at Comcare, um, I'm here just to share the good news that in addition to being a community mill health center and a certified addiction treatment program, we are also now a certified community behavioral health clinic, you guys know that, but the public doesn't really know that, so I thought I'd take just a moment and indicate what that meant, so in 2021, we started our journey to becoming a certified community behavioral health clinic, these are considered centers of excellence at the national level, so it's a certification that you work toward, um, and you continue to grow your resources in your community, but we got a grant in 2021, um, in 2022, the Kansas Legislature passed, um, legislation establishing the development of certified community behavioral health clinics, to date, we have multiple CMHCs that are getting certified, um, we were one of the original, um, agencies to get provisional certification, and it's taken us 18 months to get to the point where our certification is now full, and that means that we have implemented a lot of expanded services and new scopes of services, so one that's visible and present in the community is we've expanded our mobile crisis response to 24/7, um, opportunity, we have implemented what's called care coordination, which is kind of the linchpin to certified community behavioral health clinics, meanings that we try to wrap supports around the individual through our partnerships with, um, primary care providers, academic settings, and other places that people need services from, and that we help them access those services if they have identified need, um, it also means we've implemented several what's called evidence-based practices, meaning these are promising practices, um, with a lot of fidelity behind them, so we've implemented what's called supported employment, or an effort to engage more of our, um, individuals into, um, either an academic career path, or a career path in learning new skills on the job with supports from our staff, as well as, um, what we call a sort of community treatment, which is designed to help folks that have frequently contacts with law enforcement, um, and are harder to engage, and we wrap team approach around that individual with the hope that with consistent and regular interaction, um, they, they begin to engage more actively in their treatment process, so those are just a few of the things we've done, that is, um, it sounds, um, not huge, and this little piece of paper is just that, a piece of paper, but behind that is the heart of many lions and a lot of grit and determination by a lot of employees at Comcare, um, to get to where we're at, and I'm really proud of where Comcare is today, um, we're not, we haven't fully arrived, we still need to scale up, um, but at this point, we meet all the mandatory requirements, um, and are gonna continue to grow our presence in the community, and really have a positive impact on the, on the, the well-being of those we serve.
Very good, any questions or comments for Joan?
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, I would just say Joan, thank you so much for everything you're doing at Comcare, and the role that Comcare has in this community and the public health ecosystem, you know, we have some exciting things that are coming, you know, Comcare Crisis was recently announced, it will be housing that adjacent to the new biomed campus just south of this building, um, and as the behavioral, mental health, substance use conversations and, and, uh, and inputs in this community continue to evolve and change, I'm grateful that Comcare is also gonna continue to evolve and change to meet those needs, so...
Thank you.
We appreciate you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Joan for the update, the nomination period has opened for this year's Excellence in Public Service Award, which recognizes employees from Cedric County, the city of Wichita, and Wichita Public Schools, who exhibit the highest standard of service and go beyond the call of duty, nominations are open through February 24th, and for more information and the form, you can find it at cedriccounty.org, wanted to do a quick reminder that the state is hosting a town hall, uh, sorry, town hall meeting on Monday, February 26th, to talk about the recently chosen site for the South Central Regional Mental Health Hospital, and to answer any questions from the public, yes, uh, the forum will be held at Wichita South High School in their auditorium from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, you can find more information on this again on our website, and Cedric County offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th, in observance of President's Day, emergency services will still be available by calling or texting 911, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Good, appreciate the summary, a lot of things happening in the county right now, any questions or comments for Nicole? Seeing none, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
But before we move on Commissioners, I, we have a time-sensitive issue, um, and I propose that we move, you'll look towards the end of the agenda today, we have legislative issues more towards the end, we, we do have, because of a committee hearing that's happened with our state legislature, we have a time-sensitive issue in a letter that we're asking to submit onto the record, um, so, uh, if there's no, um, if everyone's okay with this, I'd like to move that piece of legislative issues, there's only two issues Tanya's gonna discuss with this, move it, and, and address that now, if everybody is, that's permissible, Justin, Tom, you good there, okay, um, Tanya, go ahead, we'll go ahead and do legislative issues now.
Okay, thank you, and good morning Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager, so for legislative update, as you mentioned, Chairman, we've got two issues, uh, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna insert a couple, um, of extra updates in here, um, just want to mention, this is the sixth week of the legislative session, and as we mentioned yesterday, um, in staff meeting, uh, just want to, uh, give this date again, February 23rd is turnaround day, um, and so at that point, non-exempt bills, um, that have not passed your chamber of origin will be considered dead, um, just want to mention that we are tracking 26 House bills and 20 Senate bills for 2024, um, do want to mention that House Bill 2754, um, we talked about this yesterday at staff meeting, this is authorizing counties to use home rule powers to exempt, um, from conducting school sanitary inspections, uh, we talked about yesterday that we will be providing written testimony on this, and, um, I talked to Jason, and he will testify on our behalf, um, at the hearing on Monday, so, um, most likely tomorrow or Friday, I will be providing that written testimony to you Commissioners, for you all to, to look at and, uh, give your approval on that, uh, one bill, I do want to mention, this is a new bill, you've not, uh, most likely heard of this, because Jason just, uh, sent us an email on this yesterday, so this is House Bill 2745, Military Spouse Licensor Bill, uh, this was introduced, um, by the Wichita Chamber, so it essentially waives occupational licensing, registration, and certification fees for the spouses of full-time military stationed in Kansas, um, it was the recommendation from the Chamber's Military Affairs Council, and it has a hearing in the House Committee Monday, um, at 1:30, so want to mention that to you, um, I will send you that bill for your review, um, if this is anything that you might be interested in providing written testimony, we can certainly get Jason, uh, to help us with that, and get that for your review, so, uh, just want to mention that, okay, so for the time-sensitive, um, piece, we're talking about Senate Bill 500, and we, uh, discussed this yesterday in staff meeting, so, um, I'll just mention that this is a bill that Commissioner Howell had some interest in, uh, when there was a similar bill introduced on the Senate side, um, so this is for drivers' license that have been revoked, um, and this gives individuals, um, some driving privileges for certain purposes, those purposes are, um, for dropping off and picking up, um, one or more children from school or daycare, uh, going to or returning for your place of employment, an appointment with healthcare provider, or for medical emergency, for probation or parole meetings, drug or alcohol counseling, or any place the person is required to go to by the court, um, and so, before you, um, Adrian and Commissioner Howell worked on that written testimony, so you should have a copy at your place there of what this written testimony is, and so I will hand it over to Chairman, if you'd like to go over this.
Yeah, I will, uh, before we get to that, I think Commissioner Dennis would like to speak on the, on the, on the bill that you had mentioned previously, Commissioner Dennis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, uh, going back, uh, one step, uh, on the, uh, spouse bill, uh, this is something we've been working with, uh, city, with, uh, Chamber, WSU, uh, for some time, trying to make sure that, uh, we have the workforce that we need for tomorrow, and, uh, this bill, uh, supports that, uh, and I can speak from experience, uh, my wife and I, we moved 14 times while I was in the military, and she's a registered nurse, and so when you move from state to state, and you have certifications like that, it's sometimes difficult in order to be able to transfer that from state to state, so this is a, a great step forward, so I think it's absolutely the right thing to do, and I think Commissioner Howell will probably speak on the other item, but I'm definitely in support of the driver's license, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Howell, you have worked on this issue for a few years now, um, this is something that's deeply, uh, concerning to you, and something you've been very passionate about, so why don't you give us a little background and, and, and let us know this letter, and then we'll take a, make a motion if you'd like, and, and we'll go for now.
Well, thank you Chairman Beatty for that introduction, and again, this, uh, as you stated, this is something I've been working on for, I've lost track, maybe three, four, five years at this point, initially, the county didn't feel like this was a county, uh, county issue, but I've, I think when you understand the impact that this makes in our community, I think I've convinced, um, my colleagues, thank you for your support, but this is in fact a county problem, because the people that we serve, um, they have trouble changing the law, if you will, but they're being impacted by, uh, a, a law that is, uh, Kansas is, is actually kind of unique, uh, other states have provisions that, uh, that deals with this issue, but Kansas has been one of the last, last states, I think, to, uh, to consider a way to, uh, to help people get to work and take care of their kids, um, it's been dubbed as a... It's been dubbed as a law that's primarily based in poverty. We have people who, for whatever reason, they have to make a choice between paying a speeding ticket or some other minor traffic infraction and doing other things, child support, taking care of the kids, or whatever. Sometimes they just don't understand how things work, and for whatever reason, they didn't pay a ticket. But what they didn't understand was that ticket very quickly turns into a suspended license. And maybe they, because they, about 10, 15% of our population moves every year, they may not have received notification or whatever. For some reason, they didn't know they were suspended, and they got caught, they get caught driving the following year on suspension. At that point, things snowball very, very quickly, and they get, it gets to the point where there's no way the normal person who's dealing with poverty already can get out of that situation. Some people in our community have been dealing with this for decades, and it's been estimated that 50% of the state's suspended licenses are in Cedric County. And roughly, it depends on the moment, but as many as one in five drivers on the streets in Cedric County is driving on suspended license without insurance. And that drives a lot of other consequences of things like hit and run and all kinds of other things. And so, at the end of the day, what starts out as being a very simple problem based in a financial situation has a lot of consequences to almost everybody that we know here in Cedric County. It puts us all at risk. Other states have dealt with this. And so what this is, I want to just say thank you to Senator Alita Fauscudoe. She's been the champion at the state level on this issue. There's a couple of things about the bill I would like to add, but I'm not even going to go there this year. I think the bill is actually pretty good as it is sitting right now. And one thing that's different this year is the state did hold two days of interim committees. I testified both times at both of those committee hearings, and the committee hearings, I think, went extremely well. I think there's actually support this year to move this bill out, and this is going to be good. So what this bill does, Chairman and others, it's Senate Bill 500, and I'd like to read just a very, very short piece of testimony. Again, I'm a very wordy guy. If I actually wrote this myself, I probably would add another two or three pages to this because there's a lot of things I'd like to say. But thank you to our good Chief, our Counselor, Adrian. She did a great job getting us down to very basic information, which is needed. It says, "I am writing on behalf of Cedric County Board of County Commissioners," again, it's assuming we approve this today, "in support of Senate Bill 500, which would expand the list of qualifying circumstances during which the vehicle may be operated with a restricted driver's license. Senate Bill 500 would allow individuals whose driving privileges are restricted or for failure to comply with traffic citation to transport their children to and from school or childcare. Parents with restricted licenses must be able to take their children to school without fear that doing so will result in further negative consequences for their driving status. Further, Senate Bill 500 would amend Kansas statute with regards to automatic suspension of a driver's license for failure to comply with a traffic citation. This bill would allow for qualifying drivers to have their license automatically restricted rather than automatically suspended for failure to comply with traffic citation. This change would likely result in a staggering number of Kansas avoiding the vicious cycle of suspended driver's licenses each year. In short, Senate Bill 500 is a small but necessary step in reforming Kansas law as it relates to suspended and restricted driver's licenses. Thank you for considering this testimony." This is written to the Senate Committee on Judiciary, and the people who are on that committee, I think most of them were on that interim committee, and I believe we do have support to pass this, but we need to speak to it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good letter. I would say more, but I don't think we need to say more. I think this is pretty well done, and I would like to see us adopt this letter for being submitted to the legislature here within about the next hour. So we need to get your signature on this and get it submitted to the state. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we would adopt this letter as read.
And I will second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Reitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. So we will move this letter forward so it can be submitted for written testimony before their committee hearing at 10:30. One last question on legislative issues. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I appreciate it. This morning, also, a bill is going to be heard at our legislature, dealing with a statute for Father Capen. I know that the board has supported that. I planned on going to Topeka and testifying in favor of it. I'd already written my testimony and had it ready to go, but we have a board meeting today, so it kind of conflicted with our board meeting. But I appreciate the fact that the staff rewrote my letter so that it looks like it is something that comes from the entire Board of County Commissioners in support of a statue somewhere on the Capitol grounds or within the Capitol for Father Capen. He is a Kansas hometown boy. He is Medal of Honor winner. Hopefully, the Catholic Church will recognize him as a saint here in the near future. It is fitting. In addition, there is no cost to the taxpayers. It's being paid for by donations. So all this bill does is sets up a way that the state can collect those donations, put it in a fund when they have enough funding, that they can then figure out where they're going to place the statue and recognize Father Capen. So I want to thank the board for helping support that. I certainly wish I could have gone to Topeka today to testify in favor of it, but I don't see any reason that it won't pass, and the mission is here too. So thanks to everyone that helped support that. I appreciate it.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions or comments on legislative issues? Tanya, thanks for all the work you do. This is a big deal, so thank you so much. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Public agenda. Commissioners, we had four individuals sign up for public agenda. It looks to be all on the same topic. We're glad you're here this morning to speak. You're welcome here to speak and to share your thoughts, and when your name is called, just come on down to the podium. You'll have five minutes. Our clerk here will keep a timer. When that timer goes off, I will gently remind you that the time is up and to wrap up comments so that we can move the meeting forward. First on the public agenda is CJ Wilson.
Good morning, CJ. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Thank you for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak. I will be honest, I wrote a long, very nice speech, and I practiced all night, and then decided this morning that I'm going to speak from my heart today, okay? So we love Cedric County, and we love Lake Afton. We want to figure out how we can resolve this issue. A few things that I would like to clarify this morning is the amount of community that is involved. I am sure you have felt that as much as we have. We work with several organizations, nonprofits, we work with veterans, we help gather clothing for the homeless, we help feed the homeless. These are things that we do, but what I wanted to bring to our attention today is some of the things that we tend to, that I think may be getting a little bit confused. So when we lease the lake, we lease the lake for $27,000. In addition to that, we hire off-duty volunteer sheriffs. Last year before the event, you know, we worked with Gil, Officer Gil and Officer Gibbs. We didn't really work at all with Officer Easter. He was not in town at this time. I believe he had other things going on and wasn't available. During those times, we were contacted and was like, you know, we're not getting enough volunteers to sign up. We don't use on-duty sheriffs, we use off-duty sheriffs that volunteer for this. And we were told, hey, can you increase the price from $50 an hour to $75 an hour to hang a carrot in front of them to get them to sign up? And with that, it was a large price tag of $18,000 that we paid to have the off-duty volunteer sheriffs on site. In addition to that, our contract requires us to follow all of the things that the Cedric County sees fit for an event of this magnitude, what the needs they want to have on site, what we have to have. We followed all of those from the direction of the Emergency Management Services, and that was an additional $5,200. In addition to that, we also hire our own private security company with 35 officers or, I guess, security personnel on staff, which is an additional $23,000. I'm sharing this information with you to let you know that before we even get to the artists, the stage, the staff, the ticket booths, the tents, the fencing, we're already in quite a bit to have an event at this location. On July 27th last year, we received an email with the safety information on there praising us for what we did and how well we did at the event with no arrests and minor injuries. With that being said, on August 3rd, we also met with the people of Cedric County with, as far as people that helped with the event at this time, and discussing moving forward. We need to get our artists in place, we need to start selling tickets. We have owners that are a part of this. We don't use taxpayer dollars to have this event. We utilize owners that take the risk of almost $2 million to put this event on, and that is a big risk to take, but we have big goals. We've actually adopted a, well, and we made a nonprofit organization known as Community Jam Force, You Jam So We Can. That funds the things that we can do to make a difference in our community. Those are things that we put forth. We are not just a music festival. I love Cedric County. I've worked around the country, and I know what can happen to communities that have this type of an event. They get millions of dollars to their economy. Goddard is very happy. They're not unhappy with us. We work with them. I'm part of the Goddard Lions Club, I'm part of the Chamber, I'm part of Weba. This is my community, and this is our home. Everybody involved is a part of this. I really wanted to share, you know, the things about Wheeler Walker Jr. He is an artist that sells a lot of tickets in this area. He was actually in Wichita in June of 2022. We had Snoop Dogg on the stage with strippers at the River Fest. He may not be my favorite, but at the same time, we want to pull people to Kansas for tourism. That has always been the ultimate goal. It has always been what our vision is. If we can put more money into our economy, that's more money for our businesses, that's quality of life for our residents. We do not cater to children, but we leave that up to the parents to make that decision, and we placed Wheeler Walker Jr. at a time that is a reentry. In other words, if you don't like an artist that's playing during that reentry time, you can leave and then you can come back in. So those are options that we offer, and we kind of leave that discretion up to the parents of what they would like to do. So today I came because I wanted to share that this is a big, huge passion of mine, and I wanted to speak to you from my heart today. I won't get emotional, but to thank you for reconsidering and possibly reconsidering a revote on us using Lake Afton. We take safety precautions very seriously, and we work with you hand in hand, and we do not want to have costs to you. We have a boat, we have a certified diver, and in addition to that, we also have cake weather that could help us do the weather to remove the resources of the weather. So we want to work together and figure out a plan, and I'm really asking if you would please consider a revote.
Thank you, CJ. I appreciate it. Questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Comments, yeah. Next on the list, I believe it's Travis, is it Shane? Welcome, Travis. We're glad you're here. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. My name is Travis Shane. My address?
Yes, please.
445 North Emporia Avenue. I'm here to discuss, I am a drug addict and alcoholic, and I came to work for Cars Plumbing, and I was doing really, really bad. And I met Bobby, and CJ and everybody took me and his family, right? And they watched me go through, and I now have 20 months, 29 months sober and clean.
Congratulations.
In my hoodie right here, I actually lead Emerge Sober Living Community Two as well. So last year, I got an opportunity to be, help out on the stage over at the Damn Jam, and that has grown into other things now. We have started the Community Jam Force, and they voted me in to be the president of this. For somebody that had such a horrible life, to be brought into Cars Plumbing and the Damn Jam, they took me and his family. They showed me the ability to be able to love people, to be able to let people love me. And now, I'm doing what I normally don't do, is standing in front of people to talk. So considering the Community Jam Force, we are now moving up and moving in with Phoenix. Jim is going to be with us. At the Damn Jam, we're having a sober area, a non-alcoholic area. We're going to have a dry bar in there, we can hold up to 600 people in there, give them the people that do not drink, a safe place to go, watch the music, because we believe that everybody, regardless if you drink or you don't, should be able to have a safe place and a good time to watch the music. So I think that that's a huge deal, and what this is doing too is it's bringing Emerge Sober Living into this, because then we got, we can get volunteers from all the sober houses, all the sober community, to be able to come out there and enjoy it and have a safe place to go. And it's amazing. We actually got tons and tons of people that want to join in. We also have the nonprofit organization, One Million Strong, that's going to be joining up with us. United We Stown Foundation is going to be joining up with us as well. These are huge nationwide nonprofits that are wanting to join in on this because of what we offer to the community. If you drink, drink. If you don't, still come have a good time with us and enjoy it, because we all deserve that, regardless of what we've been through. And I think it's amazing. This is my family, and it's awesome. I get to go to work every single day and enjoy being at work every day, because they gave me an opportunity to become the man I am today, and it's amazing. So I hope you guys can give us another opportunity, another vote, because this is going to be a special thing that we're starting right now. It's going to grow into something huge down the road. It's going to be awesome.
Very good. Thank you for sharing your testimony, Travis.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next up, Preston Click.
Good morning, sir. If you can just state your name and address for the record. You've got five minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Preston Click. Address, 2245 South Upland Hills Court. Born and raised right here in Wichita, Kansas. So my concern is, I'm really bringing, I'm, so I'm head of security, event manager for InTrust Bank Arena, backup manager for Hartman Arena, WSU, and the casino. I'm bringing to your attention, based on bands, what you probably, not a lot of people don't know is, so Ice Cube was the first one in town. So I've been to a lot of the bigger concerts, country concerts, rep concerts, Christian concerts. I've been manager of security for all of those. We have problems at all of them. Biggest ejection is usually alcohol. You know, interrupting the person next to you, really no big deal. We just eject you so you don't interrupt the people around you. Now, Ice Cube is probably the biggest one, which a lot of people don't know what happens in InTrust Bank Arena when the singers do show up. Ice Cube showed up with a blunt in his mouth. A blunt would be marijuana. The other three bands that followed him were all smoking weed in a lower bowl backstage at InTrust Bank Arena. Now they enter the stage, again, with a blunt in their mouth, lit, and they ask the crowd to smoke weed with them. Not a lot we can do, there's 7,000 people. I can't, we can't go to every person, like, sir, can you put that weed down? Again, that's what happens at InTrust Bank Arena for the people who don't know. Again, there was little children, I've seen them up to five years old, up close to the pit, which the pit is up by the stage. Parents choose to bring their kids into this environment, okay? Right after that was Snoop Dogg. Exact same thing. Blunts were being smoked backstage. So then again, the reason I'm bringing that up is parents choose to bring their stuff there. The cuss words that come in, it's a fun environment for the people that enjoy that type of music is the reason they go. Was there any harm? No. Did we eject anybody out of either one of those concerts? Absolutely not. Why? I'm going to say they were smoking a little weed, and they were a little relaxed. Just my opinion. So with that being said, that I'm manager of InTrust Bank Arena, the security, I'm also head of security for the Damn Jam Music Fest. For the Hartman and InTrust Bank Arena, let's see, Cody Johnson, just this last Friday, estimated attendance was 11,000 people. They had 21 sheriffs on site, not counting, I think we had 80 best security on site. Keep it, InTrust Bank Arena is three levels. You've got the pit, the bowl, the first level, the main concourse, the third floor. All three floors were open. Now, keep in mind, you have three floors, you have multiple walls, you have 21 sheriffs. The sheriffs were scattered out through each level, okay? Damn Jam Music Festival is one playing field. I came up with 11 sheriffs throughout the whole event that we would need. If we need a scaffold that raises you up to where we can see with pinnoculars and see the whole platform, that'd be great. We could do it. It's even been a thought of mine to be able to keep people safe. Where I'm getting at is InTrust Bank Arena and Hartman, my staff and us, and work with the two guys that hired me, we have a very success rate of keeping people safe, having fun, enjoying the atmosphere. I am taking that exact same situation and placing it for security for the Damn Jam Music Fest. So for the last, we're on year three, the last two years, we have had no problems other than one minor ejection. Then again, like I say, if you get a little tipsy and you're bothering the people around a little tipsy and you're bothering the people around you, we will eject you. We catch the problems before they occur. And that's usually where they start. When you get to that point, even at InTrust Bank Arena, Hartman, Casino, WSU, we eject you at that point before any problems even happen. Therefore, we keep a safe environment for everybody. That's all I got for you.
Thank you Preston. Appreciate your, your comments. Commissioner Howe?
Just hold on one second Preston.
I have a couple, thank you Chairman. I have a couple of questions for you. And were you security at the Damn Jam last year?
Yes.
You were. Sheriff testified last year, he said five to 600 people and two quote-unquote events or two situations that he said he thought were alcohol-related. Again, I assume the sheriff's deputies got involved in some way. He didn't elaborate whether they were arrested or what situation, he didn't say what the situation was. But do you agree with that narrative that we had five to 600 people last year and had two incidents?
Yes.
That we had to deal with?
Yes. And the way, so the way the sheriffs work is what, cause like I said, I implement what we do at InTrust and Hartman. I move it to the Damn Jam as well. What takes place at both of those events is we have sheriffs throughout. We find the problem. I went to WSU and the reason I'm gonna be excited this far is I went to WSU for the security class for three months. And so come to, for that, we at InTrust Bank Arena and Hartman and any of the other places, sheriffs are available to us. As somebody gets, you know, alcohol-related, we will go ask them to escort, we'll ask them to escort us out. The sheriff is then radioed from our head, I, so our lower security up radio to the upper security, the upper security radios to the sheriff. As we escort these people out, the sheriff is actually our backup. They really don't even do nothing. They will walk literally right behind us and make sure we don't have problems. But we take all the, we take everything off of our sheriffs. But once we get them to the gate, and that's kind of when the sheriffs pick up. You know, we get them to the door, the sheriffs are basically our backup. And then once you get to the gate or the door, well, like InTrust, you get to the door, the doors, they, we exit the person out, we shut the door and then the sheriffs, the security, we just walk away.
Okay. And then a second question is, again, I think it was said by, I believe the sheriff that El Dorado basically did not, didn't want them, didn't want them back or didn't allow them back or however that was done. But they, this had been done at El Dorado for a while, but they had quote, quote, some, I think exactly what he said, but they had so many problems, they didn't want them back. I don't know what that means, but that's, I don't know how our security plan here compares with the security plan at El Dorado. But that is, that was a concerning comment that I heard. So I don't know how to quantify or qualify what was said there or even to, to validate if that was true. But that's, that was the comment that got me very concerned last week. And you want to like to make, you like to comment back about that comparison?
I can. Absolutely, I can. So best security, which is who we're using now, we're using a lot. We train our security at best to how to, how to talk to people. Cause when you approach somebody that's on alcohol or, you know, that is enjoying an event and you're getting ready to eject them, it's all in wording. It's all in how you talk to them. So if you're nice to them, you can eject them very easily. If you go up to them and you're kind of a bully, let's say, if you act like that, they're gonna retaliate. They're gonna come right back at you. We train our people to be nice and by words and you can eject people. We haven't had any problem ejecting anybody out. I've been there three years. But for the, for the event in El Dorado, that's not us. That's somebody else. But from what I did know, the security team that was there loved to fight. And if you love to fight, you're gonna approach people on a, and word them a different way to where your reaction from that person is not gonna be good. We train our people otherwise to do wording a different way. Ask people, don't tell them. Therefore, our outcome is on a lot more positive level.
And because that was a state lake, who was the contract with in that case? Would that be the state of Kansas or is that with the county, Butler County, Butler County Commissioner? Who actually would be the contract through in that case?
I can't answer that.
Yeah.
I'm just head of security.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for your answers. Again, I appreciate, I may have other comments at the end of this whole public comment time, but thank you for your answers for those questions. Appreciate it.
Preston, if you don't mind, can you just clarify? I wanted to make sure I understood. What is your specific role at InTrust Bank Arena? What's the relationship there? And then what's your specific role with Damn Jam? I just want to make sure I fully understand.
So with InTrust Bank Arena, best security has the security part of it. There is, I have two bosses. They're both above me. I run the security at InTrust. So when I show up on site before the event, I make sure everybody's in place. I make sure all the gates are ready to open before the doors open. And then I have, I have two radios. I have one to our main office and one to the lower security.
So to clarify, is your, do you, are you an employee of InTrust Bank Arena?
No.
Or are you, okay, of best security?
Best security, yes.
So it's a third-party con, it's a contract, a subcontract? Understood, okay. And then Damn Jams, you're employed by Damn Jam for?
I am part of the Damn Jam and I'm head of security.
Part of the Damn Jam means you have equity ownership in the Damn Jam? Okay. I'm just trying to make sure. I heard a lot, so I wanted to make sure I understood the relationship.
I'm one of the owners and I'm head of security.
Understood, okay.
But that's my part is coming into the Damn Jam because I was in security when this came about. So they put me in head of security.
That makes sense. Okay. Any other, Commissioner Howe?
Chairman, this is a really maybe a question for our staff or for you and it kind of ties into what was just said here. But one thing that's different about, like say, the Cotillion or Hartman Arena and even places like Century Two and InTrust Bank Arena, those places, at least all of them now, now that ASM is in, is doing the organization at InTrust Bank Arena, we don't actually, as a commission, need to get involved in writing a contract and approving the things that happen from day to day at those places. It's handled by this private company. We've handed over, if you will, the authority and the, the right to organize and to manage the events. And so we're not that involved. We don't micromanage it on an event-by-event basis. This one's different because this is the county commission. I'm just wondering if we actually ever thought about having a, a management company take on, if you will, this type of event at, at these, at these venues that, again, I don't know that I like the fact that we have to have a contract. It would be nice to say, so-and-so is managing, if you will, events at whatever venue, just like InTrust Bank Arena. We don't have to get involved at that level. They take care of all the planning and requirements and security and whatever. They have to have the insurance. It seems to me that what makes this one different, people keep asking, well, how's this different than InTrust Bank Arena? InTrust Bank Arena, we don't have to have a contract with Snoop Dogg. Okay? We don't deal with that. ASM does that. So that's the difference. How's it different than River Fest? Well, River Fest is, is on the streets of Wichita and if you, if you don't know, there's about, I think there's 40 fire stations in Wichita. They have 400 police officers. They can, they have plenty of security right in the heart of Wichita. They're not leaving their community to go do something 20 miles out of the way. This, this is different for us because it's, it's not downtown. It's 20 miles away and it is, you know, it's depleting resources that we need elsewhere. That, that was the compelling problem that I think caused the no vote last week. But I guess my question is, if there was a private entity that dealt with these issues and they did the contract, we wouldn't have to even have this conversation. I, I just wonder, you know, is it normal for us to have to deal with this at our level? Seems to me like this ought to change the way we do this going forward. I don't want to have to have contracts with Damn Jam. I don't think that's what we should be doing here. Should have someone else that's managing that type of thing. I don't, again, we have events at Sedgwick County Park. We have events, you know, the zoo has events. We don't deal with their, we don't deal with their stuff because the, the society takes care of that. They handle it. So again, I just think what makes this different is that we are trying to write a contract as if we're taking that role. And I don't like that part of this deal. To me, that's, that's an observation I just had and I wanted to share that with you all. Thank you. Tom, any follow?
Well, Commissioner, you're right on all counts. What, what's also different about this, this is a public park owned by the county that belongs to the people. And what makes this event unique, or at least in my perspective, we've only dealt with them for a couple of years now, something different clearly that we had never dealt with historically. The public park is still open while this event goes on. They, they take a part of the park and run the concert, but there are still campers and people in the rest of the park. The, the challenge on having someone manage that for us would be, is it the whole park? I mean, would they manage the entire park or just pieces of the park for events such as this? This is all new to the county. I mean, I come from the city. We had robust policy over there on special events. There was many layers of application and security and fire and public safety and ingress, egress traffic. We have no such policy in the county which we'd have to draft. And then if we want to look at outside management of that, I think that that's something staff could look at if that's the will of the commission.
Okay. Okay, Tom. Thank you for that. And Preston, thanks for, thanks for being here today.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, next, Rick Rangel. Good morning, sir. If you can just state your name and your address for the record. You've got five minutes.
Good morning, sir. Rick Rangel, Flat Branch Home Loans. Our building office is 810 West Douglas Suite D. Before I start, Mr. Howe, I would definitely ask you to re-talk to Ms. CJ. She can fill you in more on the history of Damn Jam at El Dorado. We are a different organization than that organization. So CJ will definitely be able to explain it better than I am. I am not an owner. I am a private business that stepped up to be a sponsor. And so I'm coming at it two-way. I retired from the Army after 21 years. Colonel Dennis, thank you for your service. Mr. Howe, thank you for your service to the Air Force. It was good to see you all Thursday at McConnell. I was actually there as an honorary guest. And part of what perturbed me was that we as a county are saying, hey, you don't have your First Amendment rights. We stood up as airmen, Army soldiers to say, hey, we defend the Constitution. I get it, you are in a position of saying, hey, we don't want this for public safety. But saying an artist can't speak his words, that kind of perturbed me when Cake put out that Mr. Howe said he used the F-word and that was not okay for a concert. That's an artist's right. So that's, I'm gonna leave it at that. Part two is I'm a small business owner. I do mortgages. I met people from Wisconsin, Minnesota, New Hampshire and California. The family from California has actually asked us to run numbers. They actually enjoyed coming here and seeing property. They actually got to see the value of Kansas. We are not a flyover state. We are where they can raise their family. They had a great time at the concert. They are looking at investments. They are looking at moving their family here. The family from Wisconsin actually has already pledged to come back down and I've talked to these people. So I am not part of the Damn Jam as far as ownership. I am part of it as a small business owner that says, how do I help my community grow? How do I help bring dollars to here? This is how I see it. I am willing to invest my money as a small business to say, let's grow our community. And I think that's one of the things, when we say no to events like this, we are taking money out of Sedgwick County, out of Kansas to say, hey, let's not bring tours here. I want to say, let's bring tourism here. Let's increase our dollars. Let's show how we are no longer a flyover state, that we have values and we do want to raise our kids and let parents have the choice whether they bring their seven-year-old, 12-year-old, 14-year-old to that concert or not. This is not the River Fest where it's $5 for a button. This is more money. I, as a parent, am not spending that kind of money to take my teenage kid there. Now I am spending that money to bring friends that are there that are over 21 that, we do drink. I appreciate Travis's group that doesn't drink. We provide that safe space for them. And so that is how I come to you and that's why my plea is to reconsider your vote to allow Damn Jam to happen.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Rick, for your, for your comments and thank you for your service. Okay. Any, that wraps up public comment. Is there any questions or further comments? Commissioner Howe?
I don't have any questions for you, sir. I don't know if anybody else has a question or not, but I have comments regarding the four conferences this morning. First of all, I want to say thank you Travis for your testimony. Appreciate sharing how you were able to get out of that addiction. That's a huge encouraging story that I want you to use to help other people. That's really great. Thank you for sharing that this morning. And I, to the, Mr. Rick, thank you for, you know, for being a good business person for this community. I appreciate that very much. One of the things that bothers me about how that turned out last week is the, the news media. If you, I went and listened to the meeting again and I actually have the minutes from last week's meeting, not approved, but I have them in front of me. I'm not gonna waste your time by reading those. But what was said last week, what I said was, I don't personally like the lyrics. I don't, I don't, I don't like them. I am bothered by them. Okay? Am I allowed to have an opinion? Yes, I am. I have a First Amendment too. I also said I'd probably vote for it. Okay? Go back and read the minutes. Go back and listen to the story. But there was a lot of discussion about depleting resources for public safety. And that is a great, a great concern. Our number one priority as a commission, as an elected body here, is public safety. We cannot do that wrong. And we are short on EMS staff. We're trying to climb out of that hole. We're doing a pretty good job. We're not there yet. Our 911 has been beat up in the media and by the community. I think a lot of that's unfair. And I'm concerned about how this impacts them. Our sheriff, Easter, stood in front of us last week and said he had concerns. And if our number one priority is public safety, and then we had comments from my colleagues that said, they didn't make, several of my colleagues didn't make a single comment about content. They said they had comments about public safety, which is a compelling argument. Right? If the public safety part of this can be worked out in a way that doesn't put our people at risk, that when someone, if someone drowns out there or if there's a shooting out there, it's not gonna come back and, and be negative comments to the commission for being sloppy on this by not having a good plan. If that can be assured, then I would be interested in a reconsideration. But I, not until then. We don't have that data right now. But the media went out nationally, said we want to censor people's speech and we don't support the First Amendment. I'm a veteran too, by the way. Thank you for saying that. The two guys that spoke up last week are both veterans. And we, we said I'd die for this country and die for our, our rights if, if necessary. And I mean that. But that wasn't, but that wasn't the compelling, that wasn't the compelling point. Public safety is number one. And when the media puts out a story that says, we don't like the people, therefore we vote a no, that's not accurate. And I'm not sure that you, you're allowed to speak at this point. But I would just say this, the media, my opinion, did a disservice because we were very clear. Go back and read the minutes. We were very clear. That was the point. It wasn't about censorship. It wasn't about the First Amendment. It wasn't about the content, despite the fact that I think that these people are vulgar and obscene. And I hope that parents don't take their kids to this thing. And I know, I did say to CJ, I wish you wouldn't put us in this situation. Because again, we have to sign the contract. I don't like that either. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we'd receive and file.
I, I will second that motion. Before we move to vote, I want to see if there's any other questions or comments. I, I appreciate everyone being here today. And I appreciate, public comment's over. So, but I, I think that, I think what has been said is relatively sufficient. And you heard Commissioner Howe's comments. And I would just say, because people that come and, I think they, I think they deserve to hear feedback from their electeds. I think that's, I think that's a good thing. The, I can speak from my seat and my vote. It's nothing to do with an individual artist or anything, when the approval or disapproval of the contract. That could be handled separately, frankly. And I said as much last week. The issue for me is when you have a sheriff and an EMS director and a, and a fire chief talk about concerns and depleting resources. That is a significant balance. I think all reasonably-minded people can say, okay, we understand that's a significant balance that has to be weighed. It's not frankly, and the sheriff said as much. It's not even security at the event. It was security throughout the rest and public safety throughout the rest of the county, depleting resources from the core of the county. I would hope that all people would understand reasonably and sensically that that is a difficult balance to weigh. That if you have a child choking in the middle of Wichita and EMS is depleted, that that is a challenging situation that has to be considered. So you have that balance with the balance of, we want to celebrate festivals. We want to have a good time. We want to be a community that does things exactly like what you're describing. I'm for that. I'm very much for that. But I'm very much for the quality of life and public safety as well. So I, I just say that the balance isn't as easy. It's not binary, do an event, not do an event. There's a lot of complex factors that go into this. We just had a commissioner say that he's interested in having conversations and seeing how we can shore these things up to make sure that they're not depleting resources. I will tell you from my seat, I, I'm not the public safety expert. That the sheriff, the EMS director and the fire chief would have to advise us on what that looks like. And I will lean heavily into their opinions on these things. And they're gonna give us an honest estimate and an honest analysis. Cause they always do. And their priority is to make sure that this community is safe. It's not binary. It's not an issue of we don't like festivals. Speaking for myself, it's an issue of how do we make sure that we're not depleting resources in this community and people are safe. I'll remind you, if you look at the news media the last 45 days, it's not just criticism about the Sedgwick County Commission and their decision on Damn Jam. Cause we have children killing children. We have, we have substance use and mental health and behavioral health ravaging this community. And if you don't have a Boarda County Commission that takes public safety and those things as top priority, then we're not doing our job. And that's not to say that quality of life in festivals are not important. That's not to say that at all. It's to say it's a tough balance. It's a very difficult balance. So Commissioner Howe, I'm happy to have the conversation with you and we'll, we'll work some things together in regards to making sure we're communicating to people effectively. At the very least, you deserve communication from your elected representatives about where we stand on these issues, at the very least. And you'll get that. You will certainly get that. So there's a motion and a second to receive and file. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Beatty?
Aye. Thank you, everyone that came this morning to, to share comments on this. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A. Regular Meeting Minutes, January 24th, 2024.
Okay. Commissioners, we all had a chance to review the minutes. Any questions or comments? Okay. I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 24th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring Black History Month.
Yes. We have a special guest with us this morning, a lot of special guests, but one of my favorite people in this community is here today, and Ms. Denise Sherman. So I would like to read a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas each year, Black History Month is observed in February, and whereas the origins of Black History Month date back to 1915, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization known today as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African American history and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that African Americans have made in shaping our country, society, and communities. And whereas the Kansas African American Museum in Wichita, Kansas, Sedgwick County, and the state of Kansas serves as a cultural hub to honor and celebrate the richness of the African American culture and provides a place to explore, reflect, and remind us of our interconnectedness. African American history is American history, and it is our collective history. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month in Sedgwick County, and encourage everyone to observe this month by acknowledging the history and challenges faced by African Americans and paying tribute to this community for its strength, perseverance, character, and contributions, all of which enrich our lives. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read. The motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And to receive and accept this proclamation is Ms. Denise Sherman, the Executive Director of the Kansas African American Museum. Denise, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Good morning, Chairman Beatty, Commissioners Howe, Lopez, Dennis, and Meitzner, and the staff, and the leadership team here, and those visitors, and the visitors. Thank you again for presenting the proclamation today for Black History Month to the Kansas African American Museum. As stated earlier, we are the hub for African American art, history, education, and culture here at the state of Kansas, and we're very proud to serve in that role. You shared a little bit about Carter Godwin Woodson, and let me see if I can move this forward. And I wanted to share just a little bit more about him and a few more comments about how important Kansans are in shaping our society. Carter Godwin Woodson, December 1875 through 1950, was an American historian, author, journalist, and founder of the Association for Study of the African American Life and History, and he was one of the first scholars to study the history of the African diaspora, including African American history, a founder of the Journal of Negro History in 1916. Woodson has been called the father of Black history, and in 1926, and this is February, he launched the Celebration of Negro History Week, which is the precursor to Black History Month. Woodson was an important figure to the movement of Afrocentrism, and due to his perspective of placing people of African descent at the center of the study of history and human experience. He is the author of more than 30 books, including The Miseducation of the Negro. Carter Woodson dedicated his life to teaching Black history and incorporating the subject of Black history in schools. He co-founded what is now the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, Inc., which is A S A L H. And in 1926, Woodson launched the first history Negro Week, Negro History Week, and again has been expanded to Black History Month, and we're so proud to honor and serve and celebrate during this month, and hopefully this gives people an opportunity to learn more. The theme for Black History Month in 2024 nationally is African Americans and the arts, and that is very befitting to this, to the Kansas African American Museum, because this theme invites us to explore the creativity, the resilience, and the innovation of Black culture, and how the arts have been brought across the centuries. From music to literature to visual arts and performance, African American arts, artists have enriched our nation and uplifted spirits in countless ways. And so by celebrating Black history and acknowledging the impact of these artists, we honor their legacy and continue the vital work of promoting equality and understanding. And often, other work is, or other activities are brought in and displayed and shared through art, and so this is why it's so important. The Kansas African American Museum is proud to uplift African American artists from the state of Kansas, those who have a Kansas connection, and those who celebrate art that represents our great state. As stated in the national 2024 theme, art can be presented in many forms, from music to literature, visual arts, and performances. It is our mission at the museum to share these stories through thought-provoking exhibitions, educational sessions, cultural, and of course, history. And so to share a few examples of Kansans, Kansas African American arts, we turn to the following. Our beloved Hattie McDaniel, born right here in Wichita, Kansas, 1895 to 1952. She enjoyed singing with her family's musical show, began singing on radio shows, so popular that she moved to motion pictures, was the first African American woman to receive an Academy Award, Gone with the Wind in 1939, and appeared in more than 300 films. Dr. Semela Lewis, 1924 to 2022, is an art historian and an artist who was instrumental in supporting the Kansas African American by donating a substantial art collection. This allowed us to move from the First National Black Historical Society to the Kansas African American Museum in 1997. And as our core exhibition, we would have never been able to make such a monumental leap with the value and the type of art that she has given us without her, her connection. So while she's not a Kansan per se, she was originally from Louisiana, she certainly supported building out our museum here. Gordon Parks, 1912 to 2006. We call him the Renaissance man, born in Fort Scott, moved to Chicago and purchased his first camera, became nationally recognized as a photographer, author, poet, composer, and filmmaker, wrote his book, The Learning Tree, which was based on his childhood in Kansas, and then later directed a story as a movie. And then he has moved on as far, and throughout his career, he has represented Kansas globally as one of the wonderful states in the United States. He is buried in Fort Scott, Kansas, and we certainly celebrate him as one of our own. Gwendolyn Brooks, 1917 to 2000, poet, born in Topeka, published her first work at age 13, received a Pulitzer Prize in 1950 for her book of poetry, Annie Allen, served as a poet laureate of Illinois, and the first African American to receive a Pulitzer and be chosen as poetry consultant for the Library of Congress. Langston Hughes, 1901 to 1967, poet, journalist, and writer, instrumental in the Harlem Renaissance era of art, music, jazz, and lifestyles in Harlem, was raised in, by his grandmother in Lawrence and Topeka, Kansas, heard stories about his family helping the abolitionist John Brown begin writing poetry as a child, published, published his first poet, his first poem at age 19, worked as a reporter for newspapers, and again, became an important writer in Harlem in the 1920s. And then Langston Hughes again died in 1967. Here's a sampling of his work that I would like to read. Hold fast to dreams, for the dreams die. Life is broken winged bird that cannot fly. Eva Jesse, born in Coffeyville, Kansas, 1895 to 1992, an American conductor, who was the first Black woman to receive international distinction as a professional choral conductor. And she began organizing choral groups in the Coffeyville area before she was a teenager, served as a choral trainer for the original Broadway production of Poor Gee and Best, led nationally celebrated Eva Jesse Choir through Europe after World War II, and was very active in the civil rights movement, walked with Dr. Martin Luther King during the 1963 Civil Rights March. Aaron Douglas, artist and illustrator, put to Harlem Renaissance, 1899 to 1979, born in Topeka, became prominent artist, illustrator during the Harlem Renaissance, called father of the Black American art, because he used his African American ancestry to inspire paintings, first president of the Harlem Artists Guild, and combined styles of modern European and ancient Egyptian and West African art. Charlie Byrd Parker, born in Riley, Kansas, and he was a musician, 1920 to 1955, born in Kansas City, Kansas, I'm sorry, Riley, Kansas, was in Kansas City, Kansas, played alto saxophone from an early age, among the most influential jazz musicians, nicknamed Yard Bird or Bird, and known for developing bebop based on harmony rather than melody, and created jazz standards as Billies Bounce, Anthropology, and Oranthology. And then our last one that, who is still living, is Ed Dwight. He's a sculptor and born in the Kansas City, Kansas area. And not only is he a sculptor who's widely known and respected throughout the United States, he really started out as an author and a former test pilot. He was the first African American to have entered the Air Force Training Program, which NASA selected astronauts. He was controversially not selected to officially join NASA, so he was, his goal was to be an astronaut. He was born again in Segregated Kansas City, Kansas. Captain Ed Dwight now lives in Denver, and he's a very delightful man to visit with. And I want to share that as we, through the Kansas African American, look for ways to expand the history and share, we are in partnership with Exploration Place. This is our third year where we highlight during Black History Month, each week, a particular scientist or someone from that field to highlight on the wall, if you happen to drive by. And we also insist that at least one of those persons are from Kansas as we work with them. And so this year, we had two, George Washington Carver, who as a youth grew up in Kansas, and he's not an artist, but certainly was the, what we call the plant doctor innovator of the peanut and sweet potato pie as far as, I mean, sweet potatoes, as far as doing a lot of wonderful things with that. But wanted to include Ed Dwight because he was an artist or is an artist, and he is actually going to be on display this week, so when you drive by Exploration Place, or if you go and visit them, you can find out more, or come to the Kansas African American Museum. We certainly welcome you there. So with that being said, just wanted to, again, share with you that we appreciate the acknowledgement and the proclamation, and that we hope that everyone could be proud of not only Wichita, but Kansas and our influence, not only locally, regionally, and globally, and to understand that our place in this, in this country didn't just start recently. It has been going on for a long time. Kansas is very pivotal in civil rights and in Black history, and wanted to share some of the folks that you may or may not have heard of that are from the state of Kansas, and serving as the cultural hub right here in Wichita and in Sedgwick County is a proud moment for us.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation and sharing all those wonderful people. Some comments and questions. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Denise, thank you very much for being here. When I was first sworn in, our office was right next to TCAM. And so one day, early after I was sworn in, I went out for a walk and decided to stop by. I'd never been in TCAM before, which was, was my mistake in the future earlier. Talked with Mark McCormick, known him for some time, graduate from North High School, got his love of journalism from being a writer on the North Star, the newspaper for North, and of course, I taught at North Best High School. But as I toured that very first time, and you spoke about art today, and it really got me thinking, because as I was touring the facility, you've got millions of dollars worth of art stored underneath the steps. And I, I just, that struck me as the wrong thing to have that much art that the public ought to be able to see, stuck away underneath the stairwell. And if there was ever any kind of damage to it, that would be a loss to this community. So Mark and I started talking about, what can we do for the future of TCAM? It's a great facility where it's at, but it's in the wrong place, and it's not big enough to do what you need to do. So he and I started talking about it, but until you came on board and shifted us in the second gear, a lot has changed. And so now there is a plan for the future. He and I started talking about the Sunflower Bank before you came on board, but you made it happen. You made that announcement at one of the big dinners we had one night, and by the way, the dinner was very hot. I've tasted spicy food in my life, but that was spicy. But Sedgwick County is a partner with you on, on moving this forward, and I am pleased that we are able to move forward. So I, I hope you can kind of give us a status of where we're at on moving forward with getting TCAM into the Sunflower Bank right at Second Main.
Yes, yes.
It's a great location, so please let us know what the future holds. Thank you.
Thank you for all of those comments and all the support, and yes, we are very excited about our next phase. We've been working very hard the last six years to, to get this movement going, but this conversation about moving has been going on for decades, and so a lot of things come together for us to finally make that move, and it wasn't just me, but many others who also joined in and, of course, partnering with the county to make this happen. And you mentioned some of the challenges that we have at our current building. Yes, it is, the location isn't the best. It has really, I think, stifled our growth and our ability to appeal to not only local residents, but those who come from out of town. We also, again, have challenges with the building and our art. While it is located, by the way, the building is structured, it is under the steps, but it is shored up and are in our vault and is under safe care, and so we have gone back and with help reinforced all of that. But moving to a new location will allow us to have what we would call a museum-quality vault, and that will sustain our, our museum and allow us to keep this beautiful art for the future. And so that was really one of the core reasons for the move, and then also being able to do some of the other things that we want to do in the community as we invite people in. So updates are that we're still on our Capitol campaign. I wish I had put a picture in here, and I didn't think about that, but we're still on our Capitol campaign. We're getting closer every day. This has been a very aggressive initiative and project, and we're just going full blast again this year. We hope soon to have new announcements about our renovations at the new location and then some dates. So with that being said, I don't have those yet today, but we will be back when we do, and we will make sure that everyone can join in. We look forward to some incremental opportunities for the community to get involved this year. That's part of our plan. And then also, we are excited as we reach out across the state to engage others to help us make this happen. I would like to say that the art community in our city has been wonderful. The other art museums and cultural centers that we work and partner with are on board to assist however they can, and we feel so good about that, because while we are a small staff, and this is going to be a mighty big project, and it's not very often do you have an art museum or a history center move to another location like this. And so as we are sharing some of our thoughts and getting ideas, we are welcoming that the art community will be with us as well, and not only the organizations and our government partnerships are also helping us. So this is a citywide, statewide project for the entire community.
Well, thank you, and thanks for being here again. It is the Kansas African American Museum. Don't forget that the K stands for Kansas, but please let the people know how that they can donate, because you're still fundraising, so.
Absolutely.
Please, we'll put a plug in today. Please, we'll put a plug in today.
They can certainly call me, talk to me at any time, come down to the museum, you can go on our website, and that will give you some basic information. But yes, we are still fundraising, it is important that when we move that we are ready to, to serve. And we anticipate that the new location is going to, you know, elevate us into spaces that we, you know, are not experiencing today, and that everyone will be able to not only find us, but, you know, get in at a, at a time and, and learn some things, so.
Thanks again for being here, I appreciate it.
You bet, thank you, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Denise, I just, two comments, then we're going to take a picture, okay?
Okay.
First is thank you, we had Central County Association of Cities meeting last month, and you opened up the museum early so that people can come over and see it.
Yes.
So thank you for that, I just.
You bet.
Thank you. And last comment, you, you have a young man over there working named Brad Richards.
Yes.
Still there?
Absolutely, well, he's in KLC training today, so otherwise he'd be here with me, he's learned some leadership.
I just want you to know that when I talk to Brad and see Brad and see the work he's doing, I'm hopeful for our future, because he is a talented young man, and he is a, he is a good find, and I'm glad he's with you over there, so.
You know, I've been so blessed, our, our staff is just wonderful, they, they're, they're sold into the vision, and they're getting it, and they're young, and they're bringing skills and ideas that are going to propel us to the future, and I'm, I'm just really thrilled about that.
We're thrilled for you. Keep going on the fundraising campaign, we're excited with what the future holds for TCAM. So why don't we take about a five, seven-minute quick break, we're going to go out front, get a good picture with Denise, and we'll be right back.
Let's get, you get routine.
Hope everyone maintained their best behavior and decor in our absence. Yeah. Let's move this thing forward. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, Item C, accept the resignation of Amanda Amerin from the Cedric County 5th District Citizen Advisory Board.
Mr. Wagner, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This item is the resignation of Amanda Amerin, recommended action, and she's an appointment to Commissioner Howell's 5th District Citizens Advisory Board, the recommended action is to accept the resignation.
Okay. Thank you for that, Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman, just wanted to say thank you to Amanda, she's a really faithful and really smart, and she attended these meetings from the very beginning of my cab, when my cab was brand new, she was one of the first appointments we made, so I'll say thank you to her especially, and for her service to the county. She will be missed, and now this makes a second opening on my board, I need to get some appointments made. If anybody's listening would like to get my attention to be appointed to this board, please let me know that. But anyway, Mr. Chairman, again, so I'll say thank you to Amanda for all of her service, but, but, Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we would accept the resignation of Amanda Amerin.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Kylie Valentin to the Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, if it's okay with you, I'd suggest we take Items D and E together, they involve the same advisory board. The clerk already, Madam Clerk already read Item D, Item E is a resolution appointing Erica Lovett to the Animal Care Advisory Board. Item D is Commissioner Dennis's appointment, Item E is Commissioner Lopez's appointment. The Cedric County Animal Care Advisory Board advises on the Cedric County, Cedric County Animal Code, also animal control policies and procedures. The resolutions are in order, and the recommended action would be to adopt those resolutions.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I did have an opportunity to speak with Kylie Valentin, I do not know her personally, but I called her to make sure that she is the right person, and she absolutely is the right person to serve on this board. She has a love of animals and has worked in that field for some time, so it's my honor to recommend the approval of her to the Animal Control Advisory Board, and after Commissioner Lopez has a chance to speak, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, I just want to thank Erica for wanting to do this, she was recommended by another person on the board, so I know she's going to be a great fit, and people care a lot about their animals as they ought to, and so I'm just really grateful to have people willing to serve on this board. So thank you, Erica, and to Kylie.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
I move that we appoint Kylie Valentin and Erica Lovett to the Animal Control Board.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Jumped the gun there, didn't I? That was an aye. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution reappointing Jim Grokowski to the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, this item would, is a resolution that would reappoint Mr. Grokowski to the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board, that board advises the county on mental health programs that it operates. This is Commissioner Meitzner's appointment to this particular board, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate Jim willing to continue to serve, this is one of the, one of the important boards, they're all pretty important, but this one, obviously, mental health is, is high on our radar, so thank you, Jim, for continuing to serve on this. I make a motion that we approve the reappointment.
Yeah, and I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you, next item, please.
Item G, resolution appointing Kristen McDaniel to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Okay, Justin.
Thank you, Chairman, and once again, in this item, I would propose that the board consider taking Items G and H together, they are both recommendations by Commissioner Lopez for appointments, one is an appointment for Ms. McDaniel, Item H is a resolution to reappoint Craig Purbeck to the Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. The resolutions are in order, and the recommended action is to adopt those.
Very good, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much, well, I really appreciate Kristen and Craig for wanting to serve on this board, Craig's a reappointment, he's done really great things, and this is another, like Commissioner Meister just said, we have a lot of boards, and they're all very important, this is one that I think is extremely important, so I just appreciate their time and willingness to serve on this, so I will move that we adopt both resolutions.
Okay, and I'll second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, there's the appointments, let's keep moving forward, next item, please.
New business, Item I, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on February 8, 2024.
Okay, the most popular guy in Central County.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, good to see you and Commissioners, good morning, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of February 8 resulted in just only one item this morning, and this item is case management system for the district attorney's office, various departments. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Matrix Point Software LLC, and that's for a contract period of 10 years. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the recommendations, the boards, bids, and contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir, next item.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman, Commission Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items J through Y this morning.
Okay, Commissioners, we've walked through many of these items through agenda review, do we have any follow-up questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda, items J through Y.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item, please.
Committee reports.
Okay, anybody have any committee reports they'd like to share? Commissioner Meitzner?
Yes, I, I know that we do have our budget retreat coming up Thursday and Friday, but also late Thursday, we'll have another, I'm on the, serve on the board at WSU Tech, and it'd be kind of an important meeting that we have related to tuition and fees and, and some things like that, so it's, it's an open meeting, but it's a very valuable board that serves our community, I just don't have any, anything to report as a result of that, but I will be departing from our, our retreat just ASAP, because it's there at NCAT.
Oh, yeah.
At the end of the day, all right, thank you.
Very good, I appreciate you sharing that. Anything else on committee reports? Seeing none, next item, please.
Other.
Other, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Chairman and Commissioner Lopez and I had the opportunity to go to McConnell Air Force Base on Thursday night to hear a state of the base, and that was a fantastic evening. It culminated in Jack Polley, who was a definite supporter of McConnell Air Force Base, having a room at Dolan named after him, so there'll be a plaque on the, on the wall indicating the Jack Polley room, but we got to hear from all three wings, it's a very unique base, and all the time that I served in the military, I served on a couple with two wings, but this has three wings, and even more unique, there are three different branches to the Air Force, there's the active duty, the reserve, and the guard, and McConnell Air Force Base has a wing of each type there, so not only three wings, but each type of wing, so that is very unique from anything from my perspective throughout the Air Force, but the base is in great shape. The following day, I'll probably let Commissioner Lopez speak about what we did the second day, but we got to go back over there on Friday also, and so I'll, I'll let her discuss that, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that, wonderful, wonderful reception and event, it really was. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, well, like Commissioner Dennis mentioned, we had the opportunity to go back and tour their childcare facility, as we all know, childcare is such an important topic right now, and just affordable childcare and the access to it, and so we're trying to figure out what does that look like for our community, how can we grow this by 150% is really what we're looking, that we need currently, and, and that's if nothing changes, but as we know, with the biomed campus coming and all these other things that are happening, that need is going to continue to grow significantly, so trying to learn from them and what they're doing across the country is really great to have that tour and just get a better idea of some of the things, because I've heard from a lot of people how great their services are and how they're being, how they're able to provide that, so really grateful for that. I also wanted to mention really quick, I'm going to have to miss a few staff meetings, and I wanted to just explain why, over the next few months, it'll just be a couple, but I'm joining Mission Wichita, which I'm very excited to get to participate in, that starts this month, but it's one Tuesday a month for the next six months that I'll be either on base or will be, you know, and trying to meet people around off-base, so people who are part of our military have a more of an introduction to what we do outside, so if they want to retire here, it'd be a great opportunity just to show them around and introduce them to people and all that, so I'm really, I'm really grateful to get to be a part of that, that group going forward, but I just wanted to make sure that I said publicly why there will be a few staff meetings that I will have to miss from now until April, so, thank you.
Very good, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman, I wanted to suggest we rename the retreat to something else, because that sounds like a lot of fun. Budgets are not necessarily fun, sounds like we should have, you know, a little bit of a carnival at the retreat, but that's not what this is at all, so I think we should rename that event, but we are going to be having that retreat out at NCAT, and this is a public meeting as well, if people are interested in this, they can attend, I assume, is that true? There's, there are seats for the, for the people to come in if they want to sit there and watch what goes on, I know there'll be a lot of handouts and a lot of discussion about our future and budgeting and that type of thing, and so this is a really important meeting to kick off, I guess, the Commissioner's input to the next budget process that, I know that you, our staff's been working on this for quite a while, but it's our chance to kind of get started as a commission, but that's tomorrow and Friday out at NCAT, I think it's in the afternoons, it starts, what time does it start tomorrow? What's that?
10:30.
10:30 tomorrow, and it takes basically most of the day tomorrow, and then it'll continue on Friday. I also wanted to say, again, appreciate Commissioner Dennis bringing up the State of the Base event, I, I intended to be there, I should have been there, it's in my district, and of course I adore everything that deals with veterans and Air Force Base, and it's something I really did not want to miss, it's part of this is my problem, so I just wanted to say I apologize for not being there, I wanted to be there, my heart was with you all, and I appreciate you guys being there, and this is important to our community in so many different ways, I appreciate what they do, I know the base is important to our nation's security, but it's also important to this community, so, and in regards to Jack Polley, Jack is a wonderful man, he's very well-known in my district, he is a champion of all things veteran in, in our, in this, in this area, if you, if you're involved in veteran stuff, you'll know Jack Polley, so I'm so glad he got some recognition, he so much deserves that, and appreciate the fact that they honored him there. And finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about a bill hearing tomorrow, I know we are talking, talking about legislative issues, but tomorrow there is a hearing in the House, it's HB 20, actually, it's the Social Services Budget Hearing, it is a subcommittee, Social Services Budget, like all the other budget committees in the House side, they all feed their decisions over to the full appropriations, and so they're going to be looking at the $40 million that the governor set aside.